It is 10:05 a.m. on Friday, November 15. Our team is at 1520 Market Street at the boardroom on the second floor. I am stuck at home under the weather. But we are holding this meeting as a hybrid virtual and in-person meeting. Tommy, if you could share the slides that we'll be going through today. We will be providing an update on our HomeARP plan. HomeARP funds were awarded to the city of St. Louis under the American Rescue Plan Act. And having gone through now a NOFA and awarded several projects, we are updating our allocation plan to reflect some of these changes. So next slide, please. And this is a required public hearing and public comment period that we are required to go through before we submit this substantial amendment to our allocation plan to HUD. So a little bit about CDA first. We serve as a clearinghouse for a variety of federal, state, and local funds. And we're actually created back in 1974 to administer HUD funds. And we are charged by Mayor Jones with deploying these federal funds to drive economic justice by supporting our public and private partners who are providing social services, developing affordable and permanent supportive housing, activating vacant properties, and more. Next slide. So a little bit of background. We were awarded these 10.6 million in HomeARP funds in September 2021. We submitted and had our draft allocation plan or our first allocation plan. We submitted it in 2022, or excuse me, in early 2023, and was approved by HUD in 2023. We then moved forward with implementation. We released a notice of funding availability notifying developers and supportive service providers that HomeARP funds were available and providing the eligible uses, eligible evaluation criteria, and other details. We received a number of great applications and we will, and I'll go through our awards later in this presentation. But we've also had a series of changes that require us to now provide a substantial amendment because our initial allocation plan was relatively limited in terms of the types of projects that we are funding. And we've seen a more diverse set of projects apply now. So next slide. So as part of our allocation plan, we originally consulted with all of these entities. And we've continued to consult with many of them as we work to implement. But these include the mayor's office, the Department of Human Services, which is a really essential partner because the purpose of HomeARP funds is to serve qualifying populations. These are individuals who are unhoused, who are at risk of becoming unhoused, who are victims of domestic violence, or who meet other definitions of qualifying populations, which in particular includes individuals who are struggling with substance abuse or mental health challenges. And the Department of Human Services is the city's first line of support for these qualifying populations. We also have continued to consult with the Continuum of Care, with the Housing Authority, with CREA, the city's civil rights enforcement agency, with our commissioner on the disabled, and many others. Next slide. This is exactly what I just discussed in terms of the qualifying populations. And the eligible uses of these funds include the production or preservation of affordable housing, tenant-based rental assistance, supportive services, and the purchase and development of non-congregate shelter. Next slide. So this is a great table that just speaks to the extraordinary need in our community for affordable and permanent supportive housing. And what this shows is that of the city's 140,000 households, 77,000 roughly are tenants. And of these 77,000 tenants, about 37,000, a little under half, are cost burdened. This cost burden is especially concentrated in individuals who earn less than 30% of area median income. And while it's not shown on this spreadsheet or on this table, we do see that these households have a collective cost burden of over $120 million. This is Frida, but Frida, you're gonna have to go now. And that and that these homes are actually spending more than $120 million, more than they can afford on housing each year. And this is money that could go towards food, towards childcare, towards any number of other necessities. And it's of this population. I should also note that the city sees about 5,000 evictions a year, every year of individuals who are housing insecure. Next slide. So permanent supportive housing, as we did this engagement, really emerged as the number one priority for our community. One of the things that we've seen is that the city's permanent supportive housing stock is entirely full, and there's a significant waiting list. And so in discussions, in particular with the Department of Human Services and the Continuum of Care, the construction of additional permanent supportive housing emerges as a top priority in order to move folks out of shelter into permanent supportive housing and free up additional shelter space as well. And so this really, as we look at our ecosystem, is the kind of biggest constraint or limiting factor as we work to create a pipeline where, through which unhoused individuals and individuals at risk of becoming unhoused can move into stable housing and all the benefits that come with that. Next slide. And we have a number of examples, I should note, of different types of permanent supportive housing across our city. It can take the form of a large multifamily building like Doorways 2.0, of tiny homes like the Veterans Community Project, or even of scattered sites. And we funded different types of projects, which I'll go over shortly as well. And you can see here also the spectrum and the pipeline on the bottom, which runs from homelessness on one end through emergency shelter to transitional housing to supportive housing to community housing, affordable housing, and market rate housing. And another element of the update in our allocation plan is that we will also be providing supportive services for transitional housing as well, again, to just kind of meet that need. Next slide. So our original allocation plan budget includes $2 million for supportive services, $2 million for rental assistance, 5.6 or closer to 5.7 million dollars for the development of affordable rental units, and $966,000 for administration and planning. And one of the elements here is updating this budget to reflect the awards that we've made to date. Next slide. So what changes are we making? The biggest one is this change here, which speaks to how we are allocating funds. So initially, what we submitted to HUD said we will issue a notice of funding availability, a competitive selection process, and award funds accordingly. And we have done so, and we've awarded about $7.2 million in funds through that process. But we've also seen emergency needs emerge, and we'll talk about the primary example of that in upcoming slide. And so we've added inflexibility here to allow us to use these funds to respond to these urgent needs in the case of a public emergency, allowing us to award funds through subrecipient agreements with partners. And the key here is that subrecipient agreements are not subject to procurement. Procurement applies for contractors who provide goods and services. So while going through the NOFA and this open and competitive application process is certainly a best practice, which we strive to adhere to and which we have adhered to, we are also, this update gives us the flexibility consistent with the 2 CFR 200 and federal rules and regulations to award funds to subrecipients in the case of an emergency. Next slide. So what awards did we make based off the notice of funding availability? We awarded about $6.5 million to support the development of five projects. And these are the Jubilee Grand Motel, which will rehabilitate a vacant motel on North Grand into 20 units. The Elliott School redevelopment, which will rehabilitate the beautiful Elliott School building in the College Hill neighborhood, in the, excuse me, Fairground neighborhood into 40 units of housing. And I believe the Grand Motel's permanent supportive housing and the Elliott School is, might be a combination of permanent supportive and transitional housing, which is where that flexibility is also important. Freedom Living Senior and Veteran Apartments, which will provide permanent supportive housing for up to 175 senior households, although this is contingent on the award of a Lytech grant. That Prince Hall State Office Building is really large and a critical building in the Penrose neighborhood just south of O'Fallon Park. We also awarded a CC house, $300,000 to rehab a convent and rectory into 14 units of permanent supportive housing. And we awarded Source 2O LLC, which we are currently working with to rehabilitate a four-family on North Kings Highway, an additional award to rehabilitate three buildings into three units of permanent supportive housing as a scattered site rehab project. And you'll see actually that all of these projects are rehab, but they include both smaller, smaller buildings as well as large, large anchor buildings. Next slide. And I should note that this $6.5 million in awards will leverage an estimated $44 million in development. We also awarded funds to, towards permanent supportive housing. And here, our NOFA really tied the permanent supportive, the services to the projects. The NOFA clearly stated that we would only award supportive services funding to entities providing those supportive services to projects that were awarded funds, that we wanted to braid these two together for maximum impact. And so in line with that, we have awarded GASA funding to provide supportive services at that scattered site rehab project just discussed with Source 2O LLC. We are awarding Jubilee funding to provide supportive services at the motel on North Grand. And we are awarding a CC house funding to provide supportive services as well. Next slide. The, I've alluded a couple of times to urgent need, and this is why the city has been housing unhoused individuals in transitional housing at the Little Sisters of the Poor Building since the beginning of COVID in 2020. Specifically, the city has been leasing floors 2, 6, 7, and 8 of this tower to how, which provides 110 beds of transitional housing. And we've also entered into an operating agreement with Magdala to manage and provide supportive services to these individuals. This is all through the Department of Human Services, not CDA. However, things are changing for the better at the Little Sisters of the Poor Facility. Specifically, the owner sold the facility to Peter and Paul in early 2024. And Peter and Paul is investing in the space to create non-congregate shelter and additional shelter and transitional housing space. However, the DHS lease and operating agreements that are in place and their funding sources expire at the end of 2024. And so in order to avoid the displacement of more than 100 unhoused individuals in the middle of winter, DHS has asked CDA to take over funding for supportive services for this facility. Supportive services for transitional housing is an eligible use of HomeARP funds. And so we are moving forward in a warning, Magdala, 588,000 to continue providing these services. But this is one of the important reasons why we have to update this allocation plan. And we hope to receive HUD approval before the end of the year. Next slide. So in related notes, we made a couple of additional amendments to our HomeARP allocation plan. One of these is noting that we may fund the provision of HomeARP eligible supportive services to members of qualifying populations as defined by HUD. And so again, expanding those eligible uses. Next slide. And really expanding the eligible uses to reflect the eligibility of HomeARP funds. Here, we made an important update, which really ties our... So one of the things that the HomeARP allocation plan does is we are required to detail our preferences and how we are going to identify who we serve. Because the need obviously is dramatically exceeds our available resources. In our initial HomeARP allocation plan, we did not, we said we would not have preferences. And so we said we are not applying preferences to any qualifying populations. As we've continued our, and deepened our engagement with the Department of Human Services and the Continuum of Care, we've decided that it makes the most sense in order to align resources strategically to really tap into the Continuum of Care intake system and give preference to agencies and organizations. They utilize the COC intake 2-on-1 or direct referrals and prioritize funding for individual, prioritize funding for supportive services to individuals and families who are unhoused or at risk of becoming unhoused and who are highest on the COC's intake system. Next slide. Similarly, here, this is just elucidating why we've created this preference. And that is that the COC has a significant waiting list of at least 772 households, over half of whom have been homeless for over half a year. And so there is a real need to serve these individuals and move them into permanent supportive housing and provide them with supportive services. Next slide. In addition, we've added some language here detailing how we will continue to leverage other funding sources, including emergency solutions grants, ESG grants through DHS and partnerships with the Affordable Housing Commission, the COC, and others to meet the unmet needs, because HomeARP funds are not sufficient to meet the unmet needs. Next slide. And that brings us to a conclusion. We will now open the floor for any questions and public comment. Thank you.
And if you're in the room, this AV you're just for everyone, just raise your hand and I'll call on you.
And I also want to take a quick opportunity to thank the wonderful work of our team on updating this allocation plan and managing these funds. Karen Hutchins, Stephanie Christian, Colleen Pollak, Anita Poole have all done wonderful work updating this plan and managing these funds.
Yes, so if you're in the room, just go ahead and raise your hand. Or if you're online, raise your hand and we'll bring you in and you can answer live to the room. Or if you prefer, just type your questions into the chat and we'll read them off. Also, I believe, are we taking public comments? The cda@stlouis-mo.gov for comments.
That's right.
Look at the notice. Yes. Through November 15th, when the public comment period ends.
Today.
That's today.
November 22nd.
November 22nd. So you can just write in, cda@stlouis-mo.gov. That's just the city website or write to us in the chat. We'll read them off or just raise your hand either in the room or virtually in Zoom.
All great information, some of it is new to me. And so I guess kind of turned up with the Continuum of Care piece, which I think is great. If moving forward for additional funding and as we're looking at more funding outside of HomeARP, we don't have this for terms. Will points then be given to folks who are going to be funding, who are putting those elements into place and are working with the Continuum of Care folks, you know, like that, or is that something maybe of consideration perhaps?
And what were you able to hear? Need this question in the room?
I was not, I'm sorry.
It was not this funding cycle, but in future funding cycles as we think about supportive services. Will CDA prioritize members of the city's COC, the Continuum of Care? Like with extra bonus points? Amy, do you want to go to the podium and that was that, we'll just do it like that. We're gonna make this hearing so official. We can hear you. I don't think we have to swear people in.
Okay, so as folks are going to be submitting their applications for new pots of money beyond HomeARP, will there be some, in that evaluation system, some credit given toward, toward those applicants, those agencies who may be then working with the Continuum of Care and/or perhaps Department of Human Services? Folks, like is that gonna be, given this is now our focus, you know, do you know what I mean?
That's a really good question. I'm gonna, I'm gonna hand that over to Noel and the team if that's been a consideration. How membership in the COC fits in with future funding cycles?
Yes, certainly. That's exactly what is written in the con plan, and so it will be reflected in, sorry, in the allocation plan. And so it will be reflected in future funding cycles. I'm glad you mentioned that because I should mention that we will be running at least one additional funding cycle for HomeARP funds. Because once we commit this, with the 7.2 million committed to projects and the additional 588,000 committed to Magdala, there's a remaining roughly $1.85 million that remains to be committed. And so we will be issuing another funding cycle for that likely in February or March of 2025.
There's a question. This is more of a comment in the Q and A from, it's in the Q and A, it's anonymous. Anyway, this commenter says, "The portal was very challenging in referrals." I think what they're saying is, two things are, the portal was very challenging. And I'm seeing some expressions in the room agreeing. And I think this commenter is interested if CDA is able to do referrals for grant writers. I know there are professional grant writers in the St. Louis region that can assist people, but I'm not sure if CDA is able to make referrals as the funder and a city government department.
Yeah.
Would you like to take that on?
Yeah, I'll respond to both. And first of all, if you are facing challenges with the application portal, please write to us, let us know exactly where the issue is. It is a new portal, and so we need that feedback so that we can continue to improve it and make it as accessible as possible. We think it does present an improvement over our previous legacy portal, which was even more challenging, but we are constantly working to improve it. So please send us detailed notes as to the bugs or issues that you may be running into. With respect to referrals to grant writers, as Tommy noted, it's not appropriate for CDA as a public entity to refer folks to private partners. However, something that we want to do moving forward and that CDA has historically done is to host a community development week where we bring together a lot of our grantees and nonprofit partners for opportunities to learn together. And that's something that we will be working to bring back in 2025. And while we can't necessarily refer you to grant writers, we want to create opportunities for you to connect with your fellow nonprofits in this ecosystem who may be able to point you in the right direction.
Yeah, community development, community development week has been a huge hit historically at CDA with our stakeholders and CDA is eager to bring that back. I know it got delayed under COVID and then new leadership, but we're really committed, looking forward to 2025 to finally bringing that back. I know it was a big hit before. It's also a lot of work for your dedicated CDA staff, but we're gonna bring some of those opportunities. There's networking events and I think some tours together. Because we do have the awards in our office for that event in the past, we want to bring it back. I saw a hand raised in the room. If you don't mind just using the podium, that'll make the AV work super easy for everyone that's virtual and also in the room. Thank you.
Hi Noel, I hope you're well soon. This is Jim Ruse. I wanted to wait until comments were complete over the topic today. I submitted my own personal recommendations for a consolidated plan on Wednesday. And I've looked along for you and for Neil Richardson, recommendations about clearing large areas, all, I guess, vacant lots in the city is transformative and necessary for the city. So I'll leave that with the host here, and I wrote a few extra copies for the people that are in attendance today. I just wanted to say hi. This doesn't deal directly with what your topic is this morning.
Thank you, thanks for your comment. We'll take it anyway that the public prefers to send their comments. And everyone has their own learning style and public comment style.
And I will just respond, thank you, Jim, for that comment. We, as from a con plan perspective, we agree on the importance of beautifying our neighborhoods and helping pick up debris and bulk pickup and clean up our alleys and streets. And we did, I should note, award in our 2025 action plan, $100,000 to the Wellston Loop Community Development Corporation to do just that work along Goodfellow. So excited to partner with them and scale some of that work.
Hey, I'm looking in the chat, I'm not seeing any questions. If you are attending virtually, just you can raise your hand and we'll bring you in live. If you'd like to give your comments or questions that way. Or you can use the Q and A function on Zoom. And if you're in the room, just raise your hand and we'll bring you in. So not seeing any hands raised right now in Zoom or in the room. Not seeing any hands raised right now in Zoom or in the room. Well, maybe we'll count to ten and then I thank everyone for making the time to join us here on a beautiful Friday morning. And. And also thank STL TV for their steadfast help facilitating these meetings, making it accessible. To everyone from where they are. They're so helpful. Thank you, STL TV.
Thanks, everyone. Have a great rest of your day and have a great weekend.
Hey, thank you, everyone.